Testing.
So, good evening, Prince George's County Board of Education Transformation Task Force. I would like to welcome you to the June 19, 2022, public listening session for the task force. This is our second public listening session, and I want to welcome each and every one of our task force members tonight, who are now going to have the opportunity to listen to comments from our public regarding the work of the Board of Education Transformation Task Force. I want to secondly, welcome and thank our Prince George's County citizens who have signed up and who will be providing comments this evening to the task force. Just for some, some little housekeeping rules, we will be allowing you three minutes to provide your comments. And then we will allow for approximately a minute of time, if longer needed possibly. We will allow the task force members to ask you any question regarding your comments. Once you have made your comments and once you have answered any questions that have been posed to you, then we ask that you do leave the Zoom meeting and then you can actually continue watching the meeting on our YouTube channel, which we stream live. On that note, I will now hand the meeting over to our Chair, Dr. Sean Coleman.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again for attending, viewing, watching. As Ms. Wilson mentioned, we will, we will facilitate this listening session. We'll have three minutes for each person who has already pre-registered to make comments. And then we will open it up to our task force members for any Q and A about the comments. I have a list and that list is essentially by, by registration order. And so I'll just go start from the top of the list. And I'll keep time as well. At about two and a half minutes, if you're still going, I'll give you a warning. And then we'll just go from there. So our first person up is Dr. Tamara Johnson.
Dr. Coleman, I see I'm actually admitting Dr. Johnson right at this moment. She just joined our waiting room, so she will be joining us in two seconds.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you. We have enough time to accommodate that delay. I'm working with my spreadsheet to make sure that I can check off who we we get to.
It looks like Dr. Johnson has joined us, so you can proceed, Dr. Coleman.
Thank you very much. So, Dr. Johnson, you are our first person on our list. Just as an update, since you just joined us, we were, we are allowing three minutes for comments. I will provide about a two and a half minute warning. Once you are approaching three minutes, if you're still going. And then after that, after your, your comments, we will open it up to the task force to ask any questions. Dr. Johnson, are you with us?
I am. Is there someone behind me that can go at this time?
Sure, we can go to the next person and come back to you.
Yes, please. Thank you. I'm just getting home. Sorry about that, guys.
No problem. How about, is it Angelic Hagan or Angelique Hagan?
I see in our waiting room, I believe there was a, I saw Mr. Hagan and I didn't see his name on the list. That might be the same person. So they may join back. They actually left the waiting room, so they may come back in.
Okay, I'll go to the next person.
Next person, yes.
Yeah, thank you. Ms. Parker.
I'm here. Thank you. I'm speaking on behalf of PG Change Makers, a grassroots organization started by two women in Prince George's County shortly after the death of George Floyd. They deal with, our organization deals with racial and social justice issues, and we've been very active within the community for several months at this time. I wanted to speak in support of a fully elected board, but also urge that the recommendations include the fully elected board having power to be a board. It is extremely important that our board it is extremely important that our board be able to make decisions that are positive and that positively affect the people of Prince George's County. To just have a board in name and just to have it as the people being able to elect, but the board not being able to do what they should be able to do in regards to making decisions for the people of Prince George's County, still silences the voice of Prince George's County people. Right now, our board has pointed out many things that needed to be said in regards to properly looking over the finances of Prince George's County Public Schools. For example, our board member Rahila looked at and showed that we were constantly going over budget for one project, and the board oversees a $2 billion budget. Additionally, board member Stafford and Queen raised concerns about how we could include transportation for our students using WAMADA. And that wasn't even thought of until they brought it up. And then also, the board required for the administration to show how they were protecting the students in regards to COVID. These are all things that boards should be allowed to do and should continue to be able to be done. Anything less than that is simply a watered down version of HB 1107 and is not what the voters are requesting. The voters have requested the full removal of HB 1107 and the ability to vote a fully elected board and for that board to make the decisions for them. That is what, that is what we have requested, and that was what was promised on campaign trails. We urge the people who have the power to do it to repeal HB 1107 and that the recommendations include a fully elected board who are able to make full decisions for the people of Prince George's County and have the autonomy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Parker.
You're welcome.
Are there any questions from the task force? Thank you again, Ms. Parker. We're going to move on to the next person.
Thank you.
Sure. We'll go back to Dr. Tamara Johnson. Dr. Johnson, are you ready?
Yes, I am. Good evening. How are you this evening?
Good evening.
Good. So, um, tonight, basically, I wanted to just start off with, first of all, I'm a parent of two students in the county. I'm a business owner. And I am the PTSA president of one of our high schools in South County. With that said, I'm probably one of few in my network that still have their kids in public schools that haven't left to go to private school. And I fully support Prince George's County Public Schools. I see that we have a lot of jewels. We have a lot of great scholars, a lot of great opportunities. However, I also support a fully elected board. And I would like to just stand and say that I would like to see more resources targeted to South County. I think sometimes exit 11, 13 and above see more change than we do. And it affects our students. It affects our, our overall, like, image of ourselves in this area. Our kids are some great kids in this area, and there are a lot of things that we need attention to. Also in South County, and I'm sure the entire county, we're dealing with a lot of issues when it comes to ESOL. Our ESOL students need help. We are only as great as our weakest link, and we need more attention on services for our ESOL. For instance, they get tested in English. But if that is not your language, how are you able to be successful on a test if it's not given in your native language? And I think that sometimes that is, that skews the, you know, the testing scores of our schools with no explanation. So I fully support Prince George's County. I would like to see a fully elected board. I would like to hear more about what the task force has plans for the future. And again, I am in the county, have a business. I'm the PTSA president, and if there's anything that I can do to help you, please let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Are there any questions from the task force?
Hi, Dr. Coleman.
Yes.
Yes, I'm sorry to know if you could see my hand and actually.
I could not, sorry.
I'm sorry, didn't go there. Yes. But I also want to say, Ms. Johnson, thank you so very much for taking on the role as a president of a, definitely a high school. Because that's a lot of work and appreciate your support and everything. I am a former member of the school board, and South County was my kicking ground, if you will. And I would like to know about the resources that you think that we should add to our teaching staff. Are there any other, any additional things that you think that we should put in place?
Well, one that I briefly spoke on was more resources to bring our ESOL students up to par. As a PTSA, we were fortunate and blessed to apply for a grant with MGM this year, I mean, two years ago, and we won it. And with that grant, we purchased a license. It's called Reading Plus. We purchased a license to give to our ESOL staff and the students to help them with reading and comprehension. Little things like that will go a long way in our schools if we take the time to see what it is that is needed. Another area, I'm at Austin Hill High School, so our high school is pretty new. But guess what? It's not just about us. It's about the high schools that surround us. They need a lot of work, too. So I think, you know, I'm a country girl, but you know, when you look good or your school look good, you feel good about that. And I think that has a big, that plays a big part in how our, our children and our families see ourselves in South County, too. I mean, I'm fortunate to be at the new school, but what about Crossland? What about Friendly? What about Potomac? We can't just leave those schools out, too. It's about all of us. So that's just one of the areas that, as a PTSA, we were fortunate to go after a grant to get money for a reading program for our ESOL students, and hopefully that would translate over into better scores for them. Did that answer? I'm sorry.
Yes, it did. Thank you so very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any other questions from the task force? Okay, thank you again, Dr. Johnson. We're very thankful for your comments. I'm going to go on, I'm going to go back actually to Angelic or Angelique Hagan. Is there Ms. Hagan?
Hi, this is husband. I don't think she's on, but I think she just wanted to join just to kind of get a feel for the session here tonight and understand some of the issues that others are having. We're a parents of two young, well, one middle school and one high school girl. But we chose to go private school just due to some of the issues that we faced with entering them into the public school system. So, you know, we're concerned parents. We want to help. We want to get involved. But wanted to understand from a macro level what some of the issues are. So we hear more to observe than anything else tonight, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. I want to give the task force any opportunity to ask any questions based on what you just presented to us. Mr. Hagan, thank you for speaking up for the family, and we appreciate you jumping in and, and providing your comments and, and coming here to learn and observe. And to be able to insert your voices too, as needed. Thank you. I want to move next to Jonathan Brown. Okay, so if there's not a Jonathan Brown here to provide comment, Danine Johnson? I see a Danine Johnson. I'm sure we've heard this a million times over the last two years, but you're on mute, Ms. Johnson.
Good evening. Hi. Hi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to give public comments. Again, my name is Danine Johnson. I was a PTSA president for Central High School for four years. I want to preface my comments with my appreciation for all the task members because time is a valuable commodity. But it would behoove me to say that I would personally have preferred, preferred a task force to take a deep dive into the following. One, revamping the curriculum in Prince George's County Public Schools. The money spent on educating students versus administration salaries and operating costs. Teachers pay, are they making enough? Administrators pay, are they making too much? And what are students actually learning? Regarding my comment on the makeup of this, of the board, whether they are appointed or elected, does not change the state of the education of our, our children facing in Prince George's County. We need to transform teachers paid. We need to transform curriculum for students. We need to transform those that are charged with leading our children. We need to transform after-school programs. We need to transform the attitude towards virtual learning. Because I'm living in the year 2022, virtual, virtual learning is real and it's everywhere. We need to transform parental engagement. We need to transform teacher training and development. Lastly, we need to transform the buildings our students are expected, expected to learn in. This is by no means an exhaustive list. Instead, I hope it gives you and everyone that is listening an indication of the many transformations that we could be working on if we truly cared about our children's successes and the education that they receive. What I witnessed during the school board meetings are young people, and I'm talking about the student board members who are professional, courteous, respectful, thoughtful, knowledgeable of the Robert's Rules of Order and are profound with their words. Now, I don't know about you all, but I prefer those over leaders who are dismissive, unprofessional, disrespectful and non-contributing with a bunch of letters behind their name. Expert experience isn't everything, and calling yourself an expert is egocentric. I'm sure we've all worked with someone who have been doing their job for 20 or 30 years, and everything that they were doing was just all wrong. Just because you've been doing something for 20 or 30 years doesn't mean that you were doing it right or successful. Finally, I say that because.
Thirty more seconds, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
Okay, there's a narrative that some folks are trying to develop surrounding the age of school board members. Experience and who should serve. I personally take exception to this because people who claim to be Prince George's proud, claim to be long-life residents of Prince George's County, educated in Prince George's County, held jobs in Prince George's County government, now all of a sudden think that those who take the same path are not good enough because of their age and their lack of so-called business and professional management experience.
Ms. Johnson, wrap up in about 15 to 30 seconds.
Those management skills don't always translate into effective management at the government level where considerations like equity, health and safety are important. My success came from advocating for myself and others. My success came from sympathy and empathy for others. My success came from being honest with myself and others. My success came from working with others who had differing opinions than I did.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Your time is up. We really do appreciate you, your comments. We're taking, I took notes. I'm sure that some of the other task force members took notes, and of course, this is recorded. Thank you so very much for your comments. Are there any questions that we have from the task force?
Yes, um, yes, Dr. Coleman. I don't know why my hand keeps falling down. I apologize.
It's okay. Thank you.
But I have a question, Ms. Johnson. I want to know if you could give me a suggestion or maybe one, maybe two suggestions on parent engagement? And would you also address the areas that you are concerned about regarding curriculum?
Okay. Sure. Regarding parent engagement, I think we need to make the schools more welcoming to, to parents. What I witness is parents being afraid to go into schools because, again, a lot of the administration becomes dismissive to parents. They ask too many questions. They want to know what's happening. If leaders can't explain to parents what's happening and what's going on and answer their questions, then maybe they shouldn't be leaders. If they're hard questions to answer, I mean, we want to know what's going on with our children in the schools. So I think that's one, one thing we can do is definitely make the schools more accessible to parents and not kind of like, answer the phones on time, say good morning when you walk into office. Things like that matter. Sometimes I witness that in the schools where parents just stood there and no one asked them, did they need help? And in regards to, I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Regarding the curriculum, some suggestions.
Okay, so I have an engineering degree and STEM is my pride and joy. I think it should be in all the schools. I would personally make the high schools more STEM-related in, in the sense that they should have more entry-level courses like introductory to, to networking, code writing, how to create apps. Those things will definitely help our students get a job once they graduate from school. If high school, if they don't want to go to college. I work in that field, and if you have those, those, those type of skills, entry-level skills, you can get a job with a company like North of Brummett. But I feel like we don't teach that to our childrens and hi, and our children in high school. I mean, we have maybe three, a school in the north, south and central county, but we need those schools and we need those, those types of curriculum in all of our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Any other questions from the task force? Okay, barring no, no additional questions, Ms. Johnson, thank you again for your comments. We're going to move to Amity Pope or Ms. Pope, possibly? I see the name there. Amity Pope, would you like to provide your public comment? I'll come back to that. How about Tanya Wingfield? Do you see a Tanya Wingfield? Giving some wait time, some time to find your mute button.
I apologize, Dr. Coleman. There was a technical, technical error, so Amity Pope actually should be able to go. They were having problems on muting themselves, so they should be able to go now.
Okay, no problem. Thank you for letting me know.
Okay, this is, do you want me to mute myself? This is Tanya Wingfield. It's finally let me unmute myself.
So if you can mute yourself for a moment and give Amity Pope a chance, and then I'll call you next. This Wingfield, thank you for your understanding. Amity Pope, are you there?
I am. Thank you so much. Good evening, members of the work group, task force for fully, for school board decision-making process. I'm Amity Pope. I'm a super voter. Have a dog growling in the background just in case you're wondering what that noise is. And I am a proud educator in Prince George's County Public Schools. Public schools are very popular. And special interest groups don't want the general public to view them as effective or popular. Public education is one of the largest line items in any state budget. And special interest groups always want to minimize government spending. This is why the false narrative about failing schools has been so widely successful for decades. I mean, even Oprah had Bill Gates on. Remember Waiting for Superman? The bottom line is it's impossible to get people to share whatever their messaging is for limited government when people have so many positive experiences with this program. There are so many positive things happening in Prince George's County Public Schools. And that is a fact. So work group members, please do not support obliterating collective power by recommending anything other than a fully elected school board. As a super voter in this county, I strongly encourage this work group to listen to the community, stand firm and not disenfranchising the voters of Prince George's County. A recommendation for a fully elected board, school board, is a vote for democracy. And that's pretty much all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pope. Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions from the task force? Barring none, Ms. Pope, again, we really do appreciate you coming and providing public comments. From here, want to move forward to Tanya Wingfield. Ms. Wingfield, thank you for being patient through our technical challenges and for understanding. You have public comment?
Yes. Good. Thank you for this opportunity. Being a, a community member that was once very supportive of a fully elected board, I do have to say that our most successful board that we've had over maybe the last 30 years has been a fully appointed board. And they accomplished much for our system and for short years. So I think it would be a little short-sighted to not really investigate. At least I have not really seen that, those types of discussions among this panel as to what they did in those four years to be so successful. But should you move forward with this recommendation of a fully elected board, this is some criteria that we would like to see, and I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of the group Citizens for Accountability for Prince George's County Public Schools. So, one, for eligibility requirement, US citizens, of course, and at least 21 years of age. There's nothing wrong with having age requirement. We have that even for our president, so I don't think that that's out of bounds. Also qualified, you must be a qualified voter in your school district. One of the other things is also a continuous resident of that district for one year. I did hear some conversation around a nomination type process, and I would, we would fully support a complete nomination petition. This petition would give information about each incumbent. Also, information about the school board, characteristics of school board members that we should look at, and then have that petition signed by registered voters from that district that is equal to about 3% of the number of people that voted in a prior regular election for that school district, and then have that petition submitted to the school board within 120 days. The state school board within 120 days of the actual election. We also would like to see some campaign requirements so that we can make sure that school board positions are, stay nonpartisan. A couple of things that we would like to see in addition to making sure that they follow the Board of Election regulations and comply with that, but also that candidates would commit not to participate in partisan campaign activities. That would include having your picture placed on a partisan election ballot. Training, we heard some.
Forty seconds, Ms. Wingfield. Thank you.
Training, mandatory training for newly elected members. And members who do not complete that mandatory training, that would be them volunteering to resign from the board if they fail to complete that within six months. And anyone that does successfully complete the training, that should be public record on the board site. You have my full testimony, but those are the highlights of things that I've submitted on behalf of our group.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Wingfield. You landed right at three minutes, so thank you. Are there any questions from the task force?
I have a question.
Yep.
Hi, um, thank you so much, Ms. Wingfield, for providing, um, comment. I have a question. I'm just curious as to why the citizenship, US citizenship requirement.
US citizenship requirement, I, just because I feel that that is just one of the basic, just one of the basic requirements for voting in America. And it could be a little short-sighted, I'm not sure. And it would be up to the legislators to make that final decision. I would be fine with that, but that's just what we came up with.
Thank you. Any additional questions from the task force?
Yes, I have a question. Can you hear me?
I can, but these questions are set. Oh, is that Dr. Smith? Hi, Dr. Smith. I couldn't.
Yeah. No, no, no problem. I'm, I'm driving from work and I'm listening to the conversation, so I, my apologies for not having my camera on when I.
No apology necessary, Dr. But I apologize. The flow is. Necessary, Dr. But I apologize. The flow is yours.
Wonderful. Thank you. And thank you so much for, for the, the comments. My, my question would be um, in terms of volunteer, uh, you mentioned something volunteer. Could you elaborate on that, please, on the volunteer part?
Um, I don't, are you talking about the nomination con- petition that uh, I mentioned?
I, I think you were talking about the issues of accountability and, and professional development. And when uh, board members don't, yes, and so, um, I, I wanted for you to elaborate on the issues of volunteer accountability. Um, I'm a little confused about those terms.
Okay, um, well, if I use accountability, accountability would be to have these requirements in place just that we have some accountability measures and for board members. But um, there was conversation around training. So, and, and uh, the CEO had even mentioned that in her um, interview with you all. So making sure that board members are properly trained. So the training would come from a state entities to make sure that board mem- newly elected board members understand um, about the different uh, information and also could probably give some advice about um, matters that are affecting the school boards and, and how to build working relationships with other organizations to uh, help promote excellence in, in our school system. So it would be that type of training as far as accountability. Um, and then mandatory training so that they would have training in fiscal oversight, uh, non-management, uh, nonprofit management and then governance skills so that uh, that is understood from uh, you know, from the umbrella of what a board member does and not so much as what you would do as a supervisor on a job. And then just making sure that anybody that says they want to be a board member, because one of the things that we have seen a lot with this current board are board members who have been there eight, four, ten years and still don't understand policy. So there needs to be some type of training so that they are properly trained and understand uh, how things operate in a, a board structure. Uh, the understanding, the importance of understanding that federal laws, state laws and local laws come first before actually voting uh, in an administrative body and that does not supersede laws. So some of those things that we have seen prevalent with uh, this current board and, and even with some of the other um, elected boards, that just could be curtailed by having that proper training in place. And then members that fail to complete that training, uh, you know, it's just like with some jobs. If you fail to meet requirements, that could mean you lose employment. Well, if they fail to do this mandatory training, then that could be, could uh, constitute a voluntary resignation by that board member.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. Are there additional questions from the task force? Giving some away time, some chance, time to unmute your mute button. All right, Ms. Wingfield, thanks again for your public comment. Uh, and I appreciate the follow-up questions as well. I'm going to move to the next person, Tiffany Green. Is Tiffany Green with us this evening? All right, we'll move to the next person who is Lisa Bumman. Please correct me if I mispronounced that name if you're here with us. Lisa Bumman, Boomin. Going down the list. Paulette Smith Duckett. So Paulette Smith Duckett with us. Our next person on the list is Alexis Reed Curling. Come on, I got water to make it a long night. I thought we were going to have a longer night. Uh, we'll keep those in mind just in case we have to come back, but how about Ellen O'Neil?
Hi, uh, thank you very much for your patience and thank you, members of the task force for allowing me to submit comments on your important work to build a stronger and more responsive Board of Directors to guide Prince George's County Public Schools. Um, my name is Ellen O'Neil. I live in College Park and my children attended Prince George's County Schools. Men the work of, and I hope I say her name, um, I saw her on the, on task force recently, Ms. McCotter Subcommittee to review the duties and powers of the board, especially as these relate to upholding a high standard of academic excellence and equity for all PGCPs students. I'm especially pleased to hear that the school board will consider, or the task force reform will consider appointing advisory committees to address issues of utmost importance. Literacy has always been foundational to our country's democracy and this remains very true today as we see existential threats to our governmental systems. However, reading proficiency in our county continues to decline and this was before COVID. Just about thirty percent of our African-American students in Prince George's County Public Schools read at grade level. Twenty-two percent of our Hispanic students are grade level readers. Among those in special education, under seven percent read at grade level. Uh, so I know you guys are good at math. That means ninety-three percent of our children in special ed do not read at grade level. And yet our county continues to purchase training and curriculum to address reading failure. Who's guiding the decisions to purchase curriculum that does not meet any standard of evidence? As recently as us, October twenty-first, the county P- PGCPs reported that they purchased iReady products that their own data indicate have no research to support efficacy. PGCPs has thirty-nine million dollars in CARES funds combined from twenty-one, twenty-two, ten million dollars in blueprint funds for special education and an additional ten million dollars in special ed grants. Who will be accountable for purchasing decisions and student performance? I urge you to assemble an advisory committee consisting of experts in the science of reading from within the University of Ameren College Park, Morgan State and other researchers and practitioners throughout the region who can guide critical decisions regarding teacher training, curriculum and restorative education to build literacy and academic success for all PGCPs students. The sign at Riverdale Elementary School near where I live tells us, "Once you learn to read, you are forever free." And that are the, those are the words of Frederick Douglass.
Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Thirty seconds.
Eighty percent of the students who attend that school are not free. And not one student in special ed is free. Zero percent of special ed students at Riverdale Elementary are at reading proficiency. I urge the uh, board to uh, um, assign an advisory committee consisting of experts who we have right in our area, right in our county to advise on curriculum, training, professional development.
Thank you, Mr. O'Neil. Can you wrap up in about fifteen or thirty seconds?
I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. O'Neil, another three minutes on the nose. Uh, thank you very much for your comments. Any questions from the task force?
I, I have one quick question, uh, Dr. Coleman. My hand is up this time, if you can see. It's gotten a little better. Thank you. All right, um, Ms. O'Neil, I just have a quick question. Um, and it's a little off the actually message, well, it's on the message, but a little off of your specific topic. Um, I was wondering what you think that we could do to encourage parents uh, to partner with our schools in reading? What are some of the things that um, you would think that would be um, instrumental in us in implementing in our schools that may have partnerships with parents as far as reading is concerned?
Yeah, I think that's a great question. Um, but I, I just want to put that back to you as a parent of um, uh, children who are, who were dyslexic. Um, you know, quite often, um, parents are, are put at fault for their students' failures. Um, they're told that they don't read enough, that they don't have enough literature in the home. I heard someone earlier talk about our parents who are English second language learners. So the real science of reading is based in cognitive science, which means that um, if our children um, have an illness or a toothache, uh, a muscle pull, um, I think that that is then they go to a specialist to intervene. And what we're talking about really is intervention. Yes, we should surround our children with books and literacy and vocabulary to the best of our ability, but not all of our homes in Prince George's can do that. Again, I refer to those who are not only not English speaking, but often low literacy. So the core responsibility of our schools and our teachers is to teach foundational reading and to, for parents to encourage, again, a love of reading, but it is not the fault of our parents for not doing that.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you. And I do agree. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. O'Neil. Are there any questions, additional questions from Ms. O'Neil? Thanks again, Ms. O'Neil, for your comments. I'd like to move uh, to our next person who is uh, Tommy Makula or Tana Makula.
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening. My name is uh, Tommy Makula. I'm from Upper Marlboro. I'm a longtime PGCPs uh, advocate and my son is a recent graduate of the school system. Uh, uh, first, uh, before I uh, make my own points, I do want to second Ms. Parker's comments about uh, that it's very important of the uh, Board of Education is actually empowered with real decision-making power. I think that's an extremely important point. The uh, what I want to talk about is then the, uh, the uh, return to an all-elected board. I strongly support it. Uh, and so I, I hope you, you will continue to keep that SEO recommendation. Uh, uh, democracy is always a little messy, but that's okay. It's still the best system that we have. I know some democratically elected elective officials seem to be uncomfortable with that, but, but tough luck uh, for them. Uh, the, the two points I wanted, wanted to make related to this is that first of all, just to uh, pinpoint the kind of the irony and, and the uh, interesting part of that, um, how some people feel that we are not uh, good enough to have a, an elected board in Prince George's County. Dr. Thornton, when he was talking with you, really kind of point, alluded to this uh, when he said that. It's like, the, an important consideration is what does the, what does the community and the residents feel we want and need? And really it is an interesting point when like, why is it that all, pretty much all the uh, counties and communities in Maryland, why is Prince George's County not capable of having an all-elected board when everybody else is? What kind of a message are we sending? I, I just think that's an, that's why, and I hope that played a role in your decision to support that uh, recommenda- make that recommendation. Uh, the, the, for, even though I'm a really, really strong proponent of the all-elected board, I do have one caveat that, that then I want to just mention that I think it is important and I hope that you would include that the, it is important that the more, that we should work to ensure that the, the best candidates actually win in the elections. And we have a tradition of a uh, the political establishment controlling a lot of our elections through their resources, their sample ballots, slates, all those things. And that uh, contributes to the fact that a lot of times the best, the people don't actually win. It is the one who are connected, who happen to be friends with the county executive or a state senator and they may not be the best people and uh, for, for the role. And I think voters are actually smart people if they, if the elections are not unduly influenced by the um, incumbent, incumbents and their resources, the best candidates will actually win and everybody will benefit. We need to have the best people on the board. And so that's why I, I do think it's just uh, very important that uh, that we do this uh, uh, that, that we ensure that the basically, and, and this Wingfield also pointed out to the nonpartisan nature. So the-
Thirty more seconds, Mr. Makula.
Right, thank you. Uh, if that the, in these nonpartisan elections, our partisan elected officials should not play any role. And so I, I, I hope that is uh, uh, that is emphasized. And so um, that's, those are really the main points, points I wanted to make. So, so thank you for your time to serve on this task force and then uh, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Makula, for your, your comments. Do we have any questions from the task force? I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your name correctly, Mr. Makula, because I got it wrong both times I tried.
Oh, that's fine. I'm used to that. It's uh, Makula.
Makula, thank you.
That's fine.
I have a quick question for you. Uh,
Yes.
My colleagues, uh, task force colleagues do not have a question. You mentioned making, ensuring that they're the best candidate wins. Do you have a recommendation toward that end?
Uh, I would, uh, I mean, I do think what the easiest and I think uh, most common sense uh, uh, part of that is to, to make the, the argument is that it is a nonpartisan election. So our partisan elected official, state senators who tend to dominate with their slates and sample ballots, it really should be made clear that it is unethical for them to interfere in a nonpartisan election. So I think that will be the easiest way of our, unfortunately, if our system in this county, it's completely kind of, it's a polit- our political culture is to rely on those sample ballots and the slates. And so it is difficult. We need to teach our um, uh, voters basically to uh, actually make their decisions without those. And so, so I think there is a bit of an educational need of like, uh, really transforming our political culture. And because it's so ingrained, I think with the uh, Board of Education races, really, I think the easiest way for politicians to understand, to keep their mitts off, is somebody to make a strong point about the nonpartisan nature of not meddling in those elections. I think it would be healthy for them not to interfere in any of the other elections. But certainly Board of Education, I think there's the nonpartisan aspect is an important uh, point to make.
Thank you so very much. Thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Makula? I'm sure I'm not doing that right, but I'm trying, I'm trying. Okay, barring none, Mr. Makula, again, thank you for your comments and for answering my question as well. And I'd like to move on to our next person who is Tamara Davis Brown. Tamara Davis Brown. Okay, I'll move on to the, to our next person. Larry McNeely, excuse me, Larry McNeely. I see I'm Larry McNeely in front of me.
Yes, uh, Larry McNeely here. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Very good. Um, I want to uh, first of all, say uh, thank you to the members of the task force for stepping up and doing something extra to make us, make our county a little bit better. Um, uh, service matters. Um, I'm a resident of uh, Greenbelt. Um, uh, came here a few years ago with my wife. Before that, I was a renter in Hyattsville. Um, you know, I'm, I'm showing up tonight, um, not because I've got kids in the school system. Um, I don't, um, but because I'm a citizen and I think that what we do in the schools might be the most important thing we do collectively as a, as communities here in Prince George's County. It's, it's, you know, human beings, they're people's kids um, doing something together to help them grow up and, and, and learn and, and, and succeed. And I want to ask about how we help our schools succeed. I, I, I think the way we help our schools succeed is exactly what you're recommending. To say, you know what, we're not going to just treat this as a consumer thing, right? Where kids come in, a service is delivered, it's done well. That has to be good. But we know that schools succeed when parents are involved, when they have ownership, when the community is involved. Well, you know what, um, let's, let's as a county take responsibility for what goes on in our county. Let's have everybody have an elected school board. Um, we're supposed to be a democracy here. Um, let's honor that in this particular way by moving to a fully elected school board. I, I think there is, over the long term, um, and that's what we're dealing with here, future of generations. There's no substitute for um, uh, everybody coming together, doing something that only we can do together um, as a citizenry and as a, a residence here in this county. Um, so that's just my uh, two cents. Uh, take it for what it's worth and uh, appreciate your uh, service.
Thank you, Mr. McNeely, for your comments. Are there any questions from the task force? Mr. McNeely, thanks again for your comments. Thank you for coming and speaking out. We're going to go to the next person, and that is Sean Wilson.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair and the STEAM Panel Committee Task Force. Thank you for all your work you've been doing. I've been listening in to many of your task force meetings, and I really do appreciate all of the hard work you've been doing here and on your committees. I'm speaking today to say I support a fully-elected school board. I've been on the side of supporting a fully-elected school board since HB 1107 took place under the last administration. So it doesn't matter exactly who is the county executive. I believe that the that we elect the school board for the power of our education system to be within within that, under that body. And the reason why, because the voters, when they elect their school board members, they're able to hold those people accountable by letting them from senior districts. If the if the board doesn't deliver, the board, the members of the community are able to vote them out of office. And also, when it comes to the power structure and most board designs, be it boards of trustees, boards of education, boards of directors, you see typically that the executive officer, superintendent, CEO, hopefully we can change it back to superintendent, responds directly to the board. And being so, that person can be held responsible from the members of the Board of Education. Basically, you have first have the public at the top. You have the members of the Board of Education elected by the public who's hold that executive responsible and also will have oversight over their administration to make sure that the citizens really have the say-so at the end of the day by them electing the board. Of course, we heard about democracy earlier. We're establishing democracy back here in Prince George's County when it comes to our school system. And also this holding level of accountability and putting that that trust back into the hands of the citizens. And that's all my my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Do you have any questions from the task force? Mr. Wilson, thank you for joining us tonight and providing your public comment. We're going to move on to our next person.
Mr. Chair, I must say that I know a couple of teachers who wanted to get on. I had received a text from one of them. They said there was a waiting room. Just to let you know, maybe want to let some people in for the waiting room.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I was skipped for a tech issue. My name's Tiffany Green, if I could.
Thank you, Ms. Green. We will. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We'll work with our our support. Many, not many, there needed to be a pre-registration to to make public comment. So we welcome write-ins from now. At this point, we don't necessarily, we don't have scheduled another public listening session, but we definitely welcome welcome write-ins from here. Ms. Green, I didn't mean to skip you. I did have, I have a list of people to come back to. So I'll do that once we finish our very next person, and I'll come back to you. And our very next person is Tajay Ward.
I'm happy. Hello, this is Tajay Ward.
Hello.
Hi, how are you? So I have lived in Prince George's County all my life. I attended local schools in the county. And I'm a first-year teacher here in Prince George's County. And I'm aware of birthing of the uncertainties that be based. I believe a fully-elected board is beneficial and will give accountability to each board member of those who they are voted by. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming tonight and joining us with your public comment. Are there any questions from the task force? Thank you again, Tajay Ward, for joining us for your public comment. Again, really appreciate you coming and joining us and providing this important, your important editorial or comments. We'll move on to our next one. And our next one will be Tiffany Green. Tiffany Green, thank you again for letting us know that we were moving too far, too fast. And we invite you to join us right now for your public comment.
It's quite all right. Thank you so much. Again, my name is Tiffany Green. I'm a proud PG County educator. I've grown up in this county and am also a proud alumni of Oxon Hill High School, the old one. But I am calling tonight just to give my support and say that I would like to have a fully-elected school board as well. I've heard many people on the call talk about teacher engagement and parent engagement. And I just asked, what is the incentive to engage and to get out and vote and to get more involved in the county and the school system if your vote if your vote does not matter and your voice is not exercised through who you elect? I agree that it's going to make more accountability for the board. And I would also suggest that there be no vetting process or no intervention in this election because I believe someone said earlier, you know, a degree, a level of experience, who you know, does not guarantee that you know what is best or want the best for our schools, our children, and our community. I graduated here in the top 10% of my class just to go to Temple University and spend extra money in being in remedial courses my entire first year of school. And I graduated in the top 10% in this county. That needs to change. And I think more people would be interested in getting involved if they felt like their voice mattered. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions from the task force?
Dr. Coleman, I have one quick question to Ms. Green. Ms. Green, what do you think you missed? And I know this is a little off the topic. What do you think you missed during the time you were at Prince George's County and in your 11th and 12th grade that could have helped you at Temple University?
Here's what I experienced in Prince George's County schools, and it's mirroring itself now that I am an educator. I think what happens is we spend so much time on behavioral issues and dealing with significant challenges from some certain students that as long as you are not getting suspended, expelled, or causing a ruckus in your building, you are guaranteed to get an A or a B. I was an intelligent young lady. I felt that I could have been pushed further, but it wasn't required of me. You know, behavior mattered more. So I think we need to pour in and spend just as much time on those students who are scholars and A and B students and not just those who seem to be, you know, under, under the fallen by the wayside or having a behavioral issue. All of our students need the same level of attention.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have any additional questions for Ms. Green? Ms. Green, I have a question, more so of a clarifying question. You, and I'm paraphrasing. You mentioned qualifications of the board members. Are you in favor or not in favor with particular characteristics or qualifications of board members? I just wasn't clear where you mentioned something like that. I just wasn't clear exactly where you stand with that.
I'm in favor of having the best person for the job, regardless of credential and experience or a connection within the county. And I feel like if there's a vetting process or intervention in that process, that it could still be politicized, and we could end up with the same the same situation where I think, you know, someone mentioned earlier that it really is about, you know, the connections, the financial capabilities in the county. So I would like for it to be the best person for the job, regardless of credential and experience.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Green. Are there any additional questions from the task force? Okay, Ms. Green, thanks again for your public comment. I'll move on to our next person, and our next person is Karen Holmes. Karen Holmes. Going once, going twice. Okay, we'll move to our last person before we cycle back through to people that we might have missed going too fast, too far, or too far too fast. Donna Young.
Excuse me, I'm here.
Hello, Karen Holmes. Hello.
Yes, I had to start six to unmute. Sorry about that.
Oh, it's no problem. Thank you for joining us.
And thank you for allowing me this opportunity. Thank you to the task force. Thank you to you as the moderator. Thank you for everyone that has participated. I am in favor of an elected board. And my children have graduated from Prince George's County schools. I have grandchildren that have attended and do still attend Prince George's County School. As far as the qualifications are concerned, I am very concerned about the plight of our school as a seven-year substitute teacher. So we would, I would like to see someone there on the board who would kind of advocate for the students that are seemingly left behind or passed without having, as the young lady just spoke, having all of the knowledge and education that they are due. I would also like the task force, and I'm putting a pleasant for myself, especially in regards to what we are seeing going on with the shortage of teachers and students. As a substitute teacher, I was in virtual learning from day one of the pandemic up until last week. I had to take a break at now and then. So let's get a task force or and a school board that is sensitive to the needs of the students as well as substitute teachers. And I might say, and you know, please don't cut, don't cut my mic off. We would like to have a raise. Thank you for this opportunity.
We're not going to cut your mic off, Ms. Holmes. Thank you for joining us for your public comment. Are there any questions from the task force? Ms. Holmes, I have a question. Giving my my task force colleagues the opportunity to ask questions first. I have a question. What types of supports would you recommend for substitute teachers in addition to salary?
Well, as far as the substitute teachers, one thing would be more, I guess, expansion in what you teach and how we go about with additional training. I have a master's degree and I love math. If I want to be a teacher, I'd have to teach at the high school level. But I think there should be something in place for conversion, for converting the substitute teachers to a regular full-time teacher if they so desire. I prefer elementary school, but I think there should be, you know, some sort of effort put in place to assist the substitute teachers, such as myself, who who are loyal to the public school system. And that loyalty, and you know, I hate to say this again, but the loyalty should also be shown in dollars and cents. Substitute teachers should not have to work year after year after year. Now, I'm at the school because my grandchildren go to particular schools, but we shouldn't have to work year after year without a raise.
Thank you.
In the in the comment. You're welcome.
I might have cut you off, so I don't want to stop you.
I'm finished. I'm finished. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Are there any additional questions for Ms. Holmes? Ms. Karen Holmes, thanks again for joining us for your public comment. We really appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts tonight.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll move on to my next one, next person. That's Donna Young.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening.
Good evening. First of all, my name is Donna Young. I am speaking on behalf of myself as a previous student of Prince George's County, Sootland graduate, Go Rams, a parent of twins who had graduated from Prince George's County, and a former employee of Prince George's County Procurement Department. First of all, I'd like to thank the task force members for their efforts to evaluate our board, its disconnect, and make recommendations for hopefully, hopefully correcting the dysfunction which we have all seen play out over the past year and any attempts to stop this overtake of our board system, our school board system. Additionally, I wanted to address my thoughts with regards to the task force recommendations in this way. This year, we've had several ethics violation, conflicts of interest, disregards for state, federal, and board regulations, especially in procurement. So, you know, my eyes are glaring at the procurement area. Soul sourcing and preferred to preferred vendors and unqualified friends. And it brings me to one of the key things that I I believe and giving the members, the of the board, benefit of a doubt is the lack of training. That that was mentioned by Ms. Wingfield, and she is absolutely right. I think that the onboard training needs to be specific and aligned with the things that the board members are going to do. It is, it was very clear. And as I said, it played out throughout the the year. And as Tommy and Ms. Wingfield stated, we need to eliminate some of these conflicts of interest. It pulls members in certain directions. They owe favor. And that is allowing them to participate on the the down ballot of other members who are running. Because he who controls their money controls them. And it was very clear that i- in my opinion, especially because I focused on a lot of procurement activities that were violated throughout last year.
Ms. Young, thank you.
Okay, that they need to not be allowed to be on what we call the idiot ballot by allowing someone to give them money. And because they're on that slate and that person's name is recognized, then they get selected when those ballots are passed out. So I don't, I think there should be some regulations put in place for that. I'd be willing to look at them and come up with ideas with the task force. But I think community input with with regards to some of this training needs to be done. I think it's crucial. So.
If you could wrap up in 15 to 30 seconds.
Yes, okay. I also think that onboard training for members to look at all of the policies that impact them as well. Procurement is going to be in just about everything they do. So that is what my comments are today.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Young. Are there any questions from the task force? Hi, Dr. Smith.
Thank you. Thank you. My question I had for Ms. Young is, in terms of the board, are you, are you in favor of an all-elected board, an appointed board, a hybrid board? I wasn't too clear on that. And then the follow-up.
Oh, I'm sorry, dear.
Sure, no problem. No problem, Ms. Young. And the follow-up question is, what characteristics would you think that a person that is running for this elected position would have to actually help with all of these, the issues that that we have talked about tonight? In summary, those issues have been the challenging of a curriculum, the challenges of ESL students, the challenging of pushing students forward, the challenges of no student left behind, and the challenges of substitute teachers. and the challenges of substitute teaching salaries. So in summary of that, I would like to hear what characteristics, um, I think you are in favor now that you mentioned of all-elected board, but what characteristics would that person have? And how would those, uh, tho- those individuals, uh, uh, move forward? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Um, first of all, I have been struggling with the, um, the, the characteristics of the board's makeup. Um, previous, I was in favor of an all-elected board. But because of the communities, uh, the political, uh, awareness of how some of these individuals are selected without the experience, even life experience, even work experience, but they get elected into a position that it really controls our entire community. Cause you have to realize, if a person is just coming out of high school, didn't enter college, they have no real work experience or life experience. They don't know how to handle conflict, so they're going to respond as if they do when, i- i- in, as a child, you know, just coming out of school, as a young adult, okay? If you have never, um, had any experience on purchasing anything large, even a car, how are you going to be purchasing on behalf and making good decisions on behalf of the entire school system? So I think, you know, first of all, they need to be educated. Um, I, I'm, I realize that there are individuals who may have, um, work experience in certain areas that would lend support to other aspects of the board. And the board needs to consider those, um, characteristics, but the, the makeup needs to include people with experience, life experience, work experience, and educational beyond high school. So that they can understand what their requirements are. We hear board members that now saying constantly that, well, they didn't know something. How is it that they don't know that when that's their job to know it and they've been on the board for years? And so I think we need to get people with experience on these boards because some of them just don't have it. Financial experience, um, you know, uh, negotiating experience, uh, uh, contract experience. Um, uh, e- educational wise, like, um, programs, installing, you know, various programs. It's very hard. I had one child who, I, that young lady who spoke and said she was, uh, paid for remedial classes. How did my child graduate, graduate on distinguished road? And spent over a year in remedial classes as well. And i- i- we need people who can look at that and understand reports, et cetera. So yes, their characteristics, um, and I apologize if I haven't given you enough information. I can, you know, put down what I think and, uh, my advocacy with other individuals, you know, we can come up with a list of other characteristics if needed. But, you know, we need people with experience on the board.
Thank you very much, Ms. Young. I appreciate it. That was, uh, a clear answer for me. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, Ms. Young. Are there any additional questions from the task force? Giving us some wait time, Ms. Young.
No problem.
It looks like, um, it looks like that we don't have any more questions for you. Really appreciate you coming out, joining us this evening and sharing your public comment with us.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. You as well. And with that, that is our last public commenter. And we do not appear to have anyone else in the queue for those who we might have moved too far, too fast with, uh, that indicated that he wanted a public comment, but actually are not here. Uh, so with that, I'm going to close this out, uh, soon pass this on to, uh, Ron Young and Patrick Gallagher. Uh, we really appreciate all the, uh, public who came out and provided the public comment tonight. Very, very insightful. It's extremely important to us that we, we, we receive voice from the community. And this was another opportunity to do so. We are also, uh, amenable to receiving and hearing a written comment as well. And so this part is just one prong to our informed, um, recommendations. We will continue to, well, one, we'll process, uh, our public comment tonight. The voice that we received from, from, from our individuals from, from the community. But we're continuing with our document review and processing our expert presentations from previous. We are looking to provide another round of, uh, recommendations, task force recommendations. This is when we'll come to back together as a whole group on February 2nd. From now to then, we will be working in our subcommittees, you know, to that end, to provide another update on those recommendations. Uh, that's, uh, that would be February 2nd when we join as a whole group. Uh, from there, um, making sure that I outline that the voice of the community is important, our document review, our expert presentation is also all part of our, our review as we, uh, process and develop our task force recommendations. I hand it over to Ron Young and Patrick Gallagher.
Thank you, Dr. Coleman. Uh, and thank you to the community for joining us tonight and providing input. And for the members of the task force for, uh, you know, asking, uh, poignant questions and also being there, um, to respond. And so with that, I think we are wrapped up, uh, for tonight. And again, uh, to Dr. Coleman's point, we look forward to continuing work on finalizing our recommendations in the next few weeks, uh, through the work of our subcommittees. Um, and so with that, thank you all for joining us tonight. And we hope to, uh, continue to engage as we move forward to get to the final recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, my good colleagues. See you soon.